I'd like to call meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the work session July 18th. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Supervisor Moore.
Present.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilman Isili.
Here.
Councilman Pell.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Skivoni.
Present.
All right, let's begin with the review of the draft agenda for the meeting today. Whoa. Nine public hearings. One to accept a grant of conservation easement from the 1030 New York Path LLC on a property located at Watermill pursuant to Southampton Town Code, Section 244-4, obtaining a development rights certificate, and Section 247 general municipal law of the state of New York. The second public hearing is to adopt a deed of residential fee from Joseph F. Gaza for properties to maintain his open space located at North Sea pursuant to Southampton Town Code, Section 244-4, or a development rights certificate, and Section 247 general municipal law of the state of New York. The third public hearing will be to accept a trail, use shed, and conservation easement relative to a site plan and wetlands permit for the Atlantic Golf Club in the Hamlet of Bridgehampton. CPF will be presenting on that one. Dave Wilcox on the prior two. The fourth public hearing will be to consider extending Southampton Town Code, Chapter 314, entitled "The Moratorium on the Battery Energy Storage Systems", by amending Section 314-4, entitled "Moratorium Period" to extend for another six-month period, which we need to do. But we're getting close. We're having good meetings with the steering committee, and the Suffolk County Planning Commission did endorse this six-month extension. So we could probably put on a resolution for this meeting if Janice could prepare it. I don't think anybody would be objecting to that.
I do want to ask if we can switch the order of four and five and do the exemption hearing before the moratorium hearing? Because I think a lot of people are coming to speak at the exemption hearing, and I think, in all honesty, after they speak at the exemption hearing, they will pretty much for the moratorium hearing be able to just say what I said for the exemption hearing, but they do want to speak for the exemption hearing.
I don't have any problem with that.
That might be a good idea.
Sunday, is it, we'd like to reverse the order of public hearings four and five?
Okay. I'm just, you know, we don't have any Suffolk County Planning Commission on record in my office. You may have received it in advance.
I think they gave her a verbal. I'm not sure she got the written.
Okay, and we don't have anything from the planning board as well, just so you're...
Thank you. That might be why there's no resolution on yet.
And that goes for the public hearing number six as well.
Okay, so the fifth public hearing, which will might be the fourth, is to, for the applicant seeking an exemption from the Town Code, Chapter 314, entitled "Moratorium on Battery Energy Storage Systems pursuant to subsection 314-6", entitled "Applications That May Be Exempted". And then public hearing of six for the adoption of an updated pattern book for the Hamlet of Hampton Bays. She also, Janice, said that they gave a positive response, but again, I don't think we have anything...
I don't have that on file, nor the planning board as well.
And who knows what's going to happen today when we're talking about it? We might need more time.
That's true.
Public hearing number seven is for the water quality improvement project requested by the town of Southampton, Highway Department for stormwater remediation for Bay Drive in the Hamlet of Hampton Bays. The eighth public hearing is for the water quality improvement project requested by the town of Southampton, Highway Department for stormwater remediation for Bay Avenue East, Hamlet of Hampton Bays. And public hearing number nine is for the water quality improvement project requested by the town of Southampton, Parks and Recreation Department for Pocky Bog Golf Course to install an IA sanitary system. I just have to make a note so I don't forget something. So Town Board Resolution ID Number 46982, co-sponsored with Councilman Skivoni, to accept an award and authorize the supervisor to execute any and all documents for the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority Clean Energy Community Program Points-based grant for the purchase and installation of solar panels on the Town Hall.
I think we should talk about this in work session.
Isn't there something that Dorothy was concerned about, that did we have the matching funds for this?
Yes. I think this should be held over to a work session so we can find out about it with Dorothy.
This is a grant. We're going to receive a grant.
But if we don't have the matching, where are we going to get the matching funds?
What a twang.
Do we need matching funds for this?
Are we not able to cover $200,000 of matching funds for a grant to put in?
It usually says what's matching fund if it's required, but I'll check and get that too.
It says, it says funding is at no match to the town.
That's funny, because I thought Dorothy said something. Maybe I'm confusing it with a different grant.
Okay, so this is, this is a good one?
Yeah, of course it's a good one.
Will accept it, you know, I like, I suggest that.
But I mean, if the grant award is, you know, a certain amount, and then you need to come up with a 50% match. Yeah, always have, she's always reminding us, we have to be careful of applying for grants, because then when we get them, we might not have the money set aside for the matching. But it appears that this one is not one of those.
The last whereas clause, it says it.
No match to the town. All right, well, I'm going to follow up with her just to find out.
Just to make sure.
And this is because of the work that we've done in this area in previous years that we are, we qualify for this grant.
Oh. Very good.
Thank you, Jackie.
Why should we try to figure it out on our own? Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Good morning. So when we were talking about, when we're talking about grants in general, without looking at this particular resolution. And I spoke to Janice afterwards, and this one, as you can see in the body, there is no matching. This is, we're getting $200,000. When we were talking about grants, we were talking about that most of the grants require a match. And that's why that should be discussed with the board when we are applying for something. But this one doesn't have any matching.
But do we know how much it's going to cost to put the solar panels on Town Hall?
I think we're getting this grant, and they wanted to use it toward the solar panels. I don't think that was ever discussed with the board. I believe last year, Tom requested a capital project to see how much it was going to cost, but it was never approved in the 2024 capital budget. So I don't know.
So even though there's no matching condition, if the project is $1 million?
I think, I think that grant we're getting, no matter what, I think, and like I said, we really have to talk to Janice, because she drafted the resolution, she would like to use that toward that project, but I don't think it has to be. Because I think it has to do with sustainability as a whole, so we can use it for different things, as long as it's...
Yeah, that's my understanding.
That's the understanding I have.
We might want to make sure that the $200,000 will cover this.
Well, definitely, the Town Hall installation of solar panels on Town Hall, it's not going to be $200,000.
Yeah.
But I think there are more grants that we're going to be receiving, according to my conversation with Janice, that these are like ongoing grants. So whether we, I mean, I think the understanding was she would like to use it for that. Again, I can speak to that, because...
Is there a capital project here for that?
No.
No.
Well, we're putting this money, this $200,000, as you see, there is a financial impact saying that we're going to put in the capital project called Sustainable Infrastructure. So it doesn't have to be, it's not specified in the capital project that it's for.
But no, but in the, in the resolution, it says this resolution shall act as a letter of commitment that the town intends to utilize the funding provided for the purchase and installation of a solar array for this building.
Like I said, the money is going to the Sustainable Infrastructure Capital Project. There's no currently capital project for any source to replace, you know, to install solar panels on the Town Hall building.
I will check, but I think that the commitment is more of a commitment to a sustainable project or feature, and we're naming what it is, but I think that you could change it to another sustainable, something that would qualify.
That's correct.
I would, I would think, correct.
Because the grant itself has parameters.
Well, then that whereas clause should be tweaked a little bit, because it does seem to indicate that we are using it.
We can, like I said, I, I did approve because there was no matching, and it's just money that we're getting. And my understanding was that we can use for any sustainable project.
And we've applied for this and qualified for it, and now we're receiving it.
Correct, and I think based on the conversation, there are more grants coming.
And I would just, I would also just emphasize too, that we, we did have conversations with Tom Houghton for plans for EV charging stations and also electric vehicles. I know, but I'm just saying that these are things that we've had conversations about, and moving in that direction. So this helps us to also get there with funding and assistance.
Now, we can verify with Janice that if we do this, does it have to be used for the solar? If we can use it for other, then that's fine.
My, my understanding, when I was, when I asked about it, I was told that basically when we get these grants, you have to have, it's like use it or lose it grant, and you have a very short window in which to apply it to something. And so this was a project that we had
Ready.
ready to go, like you have to have a shovel-ready project. And that was my other question of when we're going towards for this other grant, for the $800,000, whatever it is, there has to be projects ready to go, or you lose the grant money. So then you've invested money in getting these grants that you can't use, because you don't have a project ready. So I would like to know how much, how much this project is estimated to be, even though we haven't done an actual costing out. There has to be some kind of...
That would be really Tom's question. I wouldn't know how much you would, I mean, but I'm telling you, $200,000. I think we, there was a capital project that we wanted to do a study to place solar panels on Parks Building. That's the $50,000 that we're moving for the trailer. That was just to study how much it's going to cost. So that's going to be, you know, $200,000, it's definitely not going to cover. That may cover the study, how much it's going to cost, but not the project to replace the solar panels. But I wouldn't know how much that is.
But maybe we can just put it in a general sustainability account.
And that's where it's going.
Right.
That's, that's the capital project that you have under financial.
So maybe we just need to speak with Janice and amend that.
Well, there's a couple of things here, you know, solar, installing solar panels is actually a cost-saving measure, and, you know, that's something that would have to be figured in as well. How much money is the town not going to spend, the trade-off there, not going to spend in the decade to follow?
I think it's in the resolution.
It's about says the town's saving up.
And then if I could finish. The, as far as the grants go, I know matching, when people think matching, they think 100% matching, and different grants have different parameters as far as matching goes. Like for, when I put in the resolution for the grant for the multi-use trail in Hampton Bays from Red Creek Park to Good Ground Park, that was an 80/20 match, and the town agreed to match, you know, the $200,000 or so thousand, and we received about eight, I think it was $800,000 or $900,000 to do that. So there's definitely different matching parameters, and that's something that the board should take into consideration when they're, you know, deciding whether or not to put money up or not, you know, because it is a good thing to get grants, you know. We work for them, and we get them.
That's what we were talking about, that in the future, when you're applying for the grants, it should be really presented to the board, whether or not they're willing to do the matching part, whatever that is.
Yeah.
Yes, three, four.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, clarify that one.
Okay.
So we're going to fix part of this?
I'm going to go check in. Well, we'll check with Jan. I just want to verify a couple of different things in that whereas clause. If you need to change it, we'll change it.
Change it, because I don't want to have to commit to the $200,000. I think it's a good idea for the project, but I don't want to find out that it's going to cost us $800,000. No, make sure the roof is strong enough and whatever.
Yeah, all that.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 46976, co-sponsored with Councilman Skivoni, amended 221 authorized funded for the Conic Aswell Partnership from Community Preservation Fund, Water Quality Monies.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 46936, co-sponsored with Councilman Skivoni, to authorize the 2024 contributions to Volunteer Ambulance Worker Trust Fund. Town Board Resolution ID Number 469A3, to authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with Magnet Forensics LLC for digital evidence analysis tool and platform subscription services for the town police department.
Sunday, could I co-sponsor this one and the next one?
Sure. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46979, to authorize the supervisor to execute a 2024 grant agreement with Suffolk County for the enhanced DEWE enforcement program.
Another grant.
Yes.
Town Board Resolution 46934, co-sponsored with Councilman Pell. This is authorize the supervisor to sign a 2024 contract in support of the trustees and freeholders and common annality of the town of East Hampton for water quality protection strategies. And just for the board's edification, this is an ongoing study on the impaired water bodies in the Sag Harbor Cove area. And it is an interesting combination of monies that are put together by the Harbor Committee from the Village of Sag Harbor, the East Hampton Town Trustees, the Southampton Town Trustees, Southampton Town Board, the Sag Harbor Yacht Club, and a couple of other different entities. And they've been studying harmful algal blooms and nutrient loading in the harbor for the past, well, we've been, well, since I've been here, for the past six, this now being seven years. So we have some real good data there. It also supports the expansion of the sewer coverage area in the Village of Sag Harbor, so we can measure whether or not it's actually working.
Dr. Gobler has been giving presentations on that, right?
Yes, he's been giving presentations to a number, and we should probably have him in here, because it's, you know, interesting, interesting stuff. And we've been supporting it, like I said, for the past six years. Okay, so that's that.
Town Board Resolution 46966, co-sponsored with Councilman Skivoni, authorize supervisor to sign a contract extended for awards and community preservation fund, a 20% quality improvement project fund for the Cornell Cooperative X.
Town Board Resolution 46961, this is to authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with Citizen Science Learning Incorporated to obtain weekly samples from freshwater bodies through Adopt-A-Pond program to monitor harmful algal blooms and perform seasonal analysis for nitrogen and phosphorus compounds. And this was a subject of our work session last week.
So my only question about this is with the, the fourth whereas clause at the top of page 13, where it says that the trustees have no funding available.
That's what they said.
We should probably say have requested funding, the trustees have requested funding. I don't know if they have no funding in their budget, but they requested us to fund it.
I think it's a good idea.
Would you have any objection to changing that?
The trustees said that they didn't have funding for this. That's what they said. I guess we probably shouldn't have put it in the whereas.
Yeah, I was just thinking that.
Sounds better the way the supervisor wants it.
Yeah, my, my only question is, is this an annual thing, or is this just a one-year funding source?
Well, I, I guess, considering that the ponds are the jurisdiction of the trustees, hopefully that this would go over to the trustees' budget line, and, you know, they would work directly with this group.
Is it somewhere we can put in here that it's for, you know? I requested funding for the 2024. It does say for one year. The contract expires one year, doesn't say it'll be renewed.
Yeah, I mean, I, we're deleting it like that.
So the wording, wait, the wording on the, the fourth whereas, where is that? I don't...
Top of page 13. You can just say the water and have requested funding to support, so you would take out available?
They supported this program, they didn't actually request the funding directly, so...
They didn't ask us to provide funding to the board?
They supported this program and said that they didn't have funding available for the program, and supported Adopt-A-Pond coming to Southampton Town to fund the $7,000 for the program.
What do we say?
I just want it clear that there's, there is no funding beyond one year, and so we may end up at the end of this for $7,000 with one year of data, and...
Well, why don't we say instead of they requested funding, if that's not accurate, we could say, and they support funding for the project from the town for this year? Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Okay, so Clerk, Sunday, what do we need to do here?
I'll give it to you. I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
And I just, I didn't have the opportunity to go through this and talk to anybody in advance, you know.
Do you want to look at the next one too? Just the first line seems like it maybe needs to be tweaked just a little bit. It says the town of Southampton is interested in initial funding, or initially funding?
Where are you, Sam?
The next whereas.
Should it be initially funding?
In, and initial funding, oh, initially. Or you could put it here, in funding the program for this, the, for the year 20, you know, whatever year we're doing. Whatever the period is. All right, we'll fix it.
And in the second resolve, it said will expire in one year. Does that not...
That's probably the contract.
Does that not lay concerns here?
If it has automatic renewals in the contract, then it would re-invoke itself. So if you just say this, then they know that at the contract renewal, they have to re-authorize the money. You know what I'm saying? Because most of our contracts have automatic renewals.
So that would, that would be in the contract. We have to make sure that's not in the contract that the supervisor signs?
It's okay if it is, as long as you're going to re-authorize funding every year.
Which we're not saying we're going to do, so...
Right.
I'm saying remove that, or make sure that's not in the contract, the automatic renewal.
I thought we, we had to transfer the funds from the, are we establishing a new account, or are we transferring?
No, it's from Citizen Science Projects, but I don't believe there is $7,000 in Citizen Science Projects.
That's a separate resolution, but I thought we had to, I thought it was originally under the Long Island Science Center. Wasn't that what we talked about, that it was in a different name, and we had to change the name?
No, it was Citizen Science Projects, but it was in conjunction with the Long Island Science Center. It was Adopt-A-Pond in conjunction with the Long Island Science Center. I don't think that it was contingent on that, the way I read it.
All right, good.
So this came from the controller, this is how she agreed to have this.
So she'll be moving money into Citizen Science Center to make up the extra.
I don't do her job, but, thank you.
Okay, next.
Good morning. This is Town, oh.
Oh. Thank you.
It's a different resolution that transfers the revenue.
Okay. That, should that go first, or does it matter?
Yes.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter, because you don't have to transfer.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You don't have to pay, but yes, it's a different resolution.
Got it, all right, thanks.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 46920, award and authorize the purchase of a 2022 Ford Ranger from Otis Ford, Inc., using New York State OGS Contract for Vehicles Class 1-8 statewide.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 46919, co-sponsored with Councilman Skivoni, to award and authorize the purchase of a 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe from Maguire Motors, LLC, using New York State OGS Contract for Vehicles Class 1-8 statewide.
Town Board Resolution 46955, recall and amend Town Board Resolution Number 20, 2023-395, award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract for requirements, contract security camera network infrastructure maintenance.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 46935, to recall and amend Town Board Resolution Number 2024-849, award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with Arcadis of New York, Inc., for municipal sewer engineering services for Phase 1 of the Riverside Sewer Improvement Project. This is just a correct typo in the amount. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46917, co-sponsored with Councilmembers McNamara, Skivoni, and Pell, to reject all bids for professional services for the design of a constructed wetland in Riverside. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46973, 2024 notice to bidders for Sagaponic and Bridgehampton Beach Erosion Control District Nourishment Program.
Sunday, could I co-sponsor that, please?
Can you put my name on it too, please?
Town Board Resolution ID Number 46990, for the 2024 notice to respondents for professional architectural, engineering, and surveying services. And Town Board Resolution ID Number 46931, to amend the 2024 adopted budget for Citizen Science Project's restricted account.
And Sunday, could I put, have my name on there as well as a co-sponsor? Thank you.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 46932, to amend the 2024 adopted budget for Parks Department vehicle. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46963, to amend the 2024-2028 capital budget and add capital project Mill Farm Diamond Court Road improvements.
I'd like to be added on that, please.
Yeah. Yeah, there's some emergency repairs we have to do there. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46930, to amend the 2024-2028 capital budget for transportation trailer project. 2024 dash, I'm sorry. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46928, to authorize the General Fund Pay-as-you-go to purchase trash cans for recyclables. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46933, to authorize the payment to Lyro Engineers, Inc., for professional services related to asbestos project design and monitoring for the 20 Shinnecock Road Hampton Bays project. And this was just, we had already authorized this payment, but now we have to change the account that it's coming out of. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46925, to authorize the settlement of Suffolk County Department of Health matter ENF-23-0035-EE for site number 13083-OPC.
Town Board Resolution 46810, this is historic landmark designation of the structure recognized as Grobsner Atterbury Estate House, located at 520 Montauk Highway, Shinnecock Hills. And we had a public hearing at our last Town Board meeting.
I think we're going to discuss it in session two. There was some discussion too. Okay.
Okay. Town, Town Board Resolution 46922, release maintenance bond for bridge facilities.
Okay, Town Board Resolution ID Number 46910, to terminate an employee in the General Services Department. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46912, to accept the resignation of Christopher Scotto, leader in the municipal works department. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46981, to appoint Eliza Morgan to affirmative action officer in human resources.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Eliza.
That's going to be very good. I love promoting from within, and she's...
It's an important position.
Yeah, she's very qualified. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46974, to appoint Brian Conway to heavy equipment operator in municipal works. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46904, to appoint David Roche to maintenance mechanic four in the Parks Department. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46905, to appoint Giadrius Matonis to maintenance mechanic four in community preservation. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46909, to appoint Paul Gabusta to maintenance mechanic two in the Parks Department. Town Board Resolution ID Number 46975, to appoint William Hydeck to engineering aid. Town Board Resolution ID number four, six, nine, seven, five. To appoint William Hydeck to Engineering Aid in Municipal Works.
Fantastic.
Town Board Resolution ID number four, six, nine, seven, eight. To appoint Police Officer Brandon Jensen, starting. And Town Board Resolution ID number four, six, nine, nine, seven. To authorize the hiring of Luis Morales, Police Officer from the Spanish-speaking start.
Congratulations.
Sandy, could I co-sponsor along with the previous one?
I think there's, I spoke with the chief. I think there's supposed to be a third on, um, which would be to promote Sergeant Carl Schottenhamel to Lieutenant. So it might, I don't know why it's not on here. It should be so that potentially it would be added on to the agenda if everything is clear in civil service.
You know, I'm sorry, I can barely hear what you're saying because that fan is making so much noise over here on this side of the roof, so just tell me what you need.
There's going to be another, there's going to be another resolution for Carl Schottenhamel.
But this one is fine.
Yes.
Yes, they're all fine.
Terrific, Dave.
Very happy to have the new people on board and there was one extra that the chief was supposed to let us know about, but we didn't get it yet, so it'll.
And we could always walk it on if necessary. That'd be a yes.
And, all right, uh, Town Board Resolution four, six, nine, eight, five. A Notice of Public Hearing to Consider Historic Landmark Designation of the Structure Recognized as the James Tuttle Family Home Located at one twenty-six South Country Road, Remsenburg, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash three, six, eight, dash three, dash sixteen point zero, zero, two.
Okay, Town Board Resolution ID number four, six, nine, six, nine. To accept a grant of a conservation easement from ten thirty New York Path LLC for property to be maintained as open space located at Watermill pursuant to Southampton Town Code two, four, four, and two, four, seven, General Municipal Law of the State of New York. Oh, this is, we're having a public hearing on this one. And the same for the next one. Town Board Resolution ID number four, six, nine, six, eight. Co-sponsored with Councilman Givoni, as was the prior resolution, to accept the deed of residual fee from Joseph F. Gaza for properties to be maintained as open space located at North Sea pursuant to Southampton Town Code Section two, four, four, dash four and Section two, four, seven, General Municipal Law of the State of New York.
Town Board Resolution four, six, five, eight, nine. A resolution accepting a trail and view shed conservation easements in connection with the site plan, wetlands permit of Atlantic Golf Course in the Hamlet of Bridge Hampton.
Town Board Resolution ID number four, six, nine, seven, zero. To recall and amend a resolution twenty twenty-four dash eight, six, one, as it relates to the adoption of a negative declaration.
What is this exactly?
Hold on now. Question.
What?
What, what is this resolution?
Um.
I know it pertains to Agua.
Uh, the Dozier, um, Dozier piece? Was it that one or the Agua piece? Dozier, yeah. It was a Dozier piece and they just had to, they forgot to put the SECR in, so they're just adding, they're mending the resolution just to add that component of SECR.
Okay.
Everything else remains the same.
Okay.
All right, we don't need no chat on, okay. So, our next section of the meeting is the code amendments to clean up Zoom requirements and remove PDD language. And with us is Janice Shearer, Town Planning and Development Administrator. And David Dale Cox.
Dave stuck in traffic. There was an accident.
I'm thirty-nine.
Got trouble, I'm thirty-nine.
People wore stuff, but, um, this out and I have Seth here who's going to just be able to zoom around the code.
Hey, Seth.
Hi, how are you doing?
Glad to see you here.
Happy to be here.
I've got it. It's the same thing, but I printed it. My, I feel like my printer ink didn't come out so well.
We just received the planning board referral comments on the pattern book and the moratorium, so all we're missing now is the county.
No, the county approved it also. I just didn't put it on because I thought you wanted to have the conversation today.
But the clerk's office doesn't have the written.
From the planning commission.
Or the.
I have it. I'll just forward it to the clerk. They sent it to me yesterday, the county.
Oh, okay.
We have planning board too?
Yep, we have both, but I didn't put on unless you want me to.
We would just put it on.
Create it.
Yeah.
I could do that. Well, I figured we'd have that conversation first.
Not the pattern book necessarily, but the best.
Best, moratorium.
Yeah. If you have that.
I didn't put it on.
No.
I forgot to hit submit. I have it, I have it. I'm sorry. There's too much going on.
Because I don't know what, I think it expires on like the night.
I didn't know if, yeah.
And we're on, their next meeting is the thirteen, so we need that one on.
Okay, I'll just, you can do it as an add-on. I'll do that when I get back to my desk. I apologize. No worries.
Okay, so, um, thanks for having me. I'm sorry, this is microscopic. Dave stuck in traffic. But instead of just going over the two things from the work session, I thought we have a bunch of these code things, so we made a table for you. And we just wanted to talk about various items that could use some cleaning up. It said Zoom cleanup, but it really was just one small thing with Zoom and the planning board where people are driving. Non-Zoom, I think you have that too, but people who come to the planning board, they're like driving and they pull over. I don't know if you want to think about codifying some sort of, you know, they don't register who they are. We don't know, you know. The speakers are one thing, just someone who opposes something, they may pull over and talk, but somebody who's actually presenting to the board. We had an instance where a person was like driving in their car, presenting.
Oh, that's not right.
So we just wanted to make it a little more professional and routine, like expectations, if you want to think about that as a code or should this be something the board just adopts as a policy?
Are they presenting to the planning board and there's nobody here in person to present?
Yeah.
I don't know if we should be even allowing presentation, presentations to be at Zoom.
I don't know either. That's why I'm here. Like maybe we just need a little bit more on this.
And I believe.
That's a Kathleen thing, I think you have to have.
And I, and I believe that the state has dropped the Zoom mandate.
The, but the governor put it.
It is at our discretion.
So it is very convenient for public people who want to weigh in on something and they're picking up someone somewhere. But we, but the driving and the zooming is a problem. You should really be pulled over. And the other thing is.
I don't think you should be able to present.
And the driving and the zooming. Or we don't mind if someone's in, you, you maybe make a case where, or, or requirement where at least fifty percent of your team is here in person and maybe the one guy who's traveling.
Right.
Joins by Zoom.
Yeah.
Something like, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, really.
Well, didn't we have to adopt before I got here, but, uh, you know, code to allow for the Zoom anyway, so that the changes would go right in there?
Yes, and, and that code is for, pretty much for the town board.
For us.
You don't really have anything for planning board.
It's all, it's all, it's all decision-making bodies.
Oh, okay. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention and glad, um, you know, Christine, uh, that you're here. We're just saying like maybe we can get a little more clarity on the Zoom requirements with the planning board.
Okay.
I've gotten some complaints from various.
Yeah.
Board members and stuff, so I just wanted to. We could clean up the requirements or put them somewhere that makes sense.
What is the situation with the state? Is it coming to an end at the end of next year or the middle of next year?
No, I think she did another two or three years.
Seven?
Yeah.
Yeah, so no one's, you know, it's, it's a useful tool, but at the same time.
We, we really need to look at because yes, it's helpful, but in the same instance, I think it disenfranchising as, as many people as it helps because there are people that either can't figure out the Zoom or they can't log on and then they were counting on speaking that way and then they can't and we close a hearing and they never got to weigh in. Whereas if you know you have to be here, you have to take time off sometimes and you have to be here. Um, you know, it's definitely something worth having a conversation about, especially if we're going to be looking at the other side of it.
Yeah, so, thank you. I just wanted, so it, so that was first on our list here.
So what does that mean?
So do we talk about, I can mark it up, I can work with the town attorney's office, we can bring some suggestions. I just like have kind of like a laundry list here and instead of going code by code yet, I wanted to just kind of just do it as a whole instead of drill down on it.
I appreciate that.
So, so, okay, so that's it. The second one is the senior citizen zone. We had looked at that and that code is like all over the place. It's talking about a small senior citizen zone. And then if it's this size, you go to the planning board under this section and then you go to that section and it's blank. Like it's all, it's like a mess. And then the other, if it's more than seventy-five, you have to be a PDD and we don't have PDDs anymore. So we just want to like fix the code to be, you know, not doing that, like all, you know, if you want to do a process where under a certain amount, you go to the planning board and not need a rezoning, that's fine too. I wanted to get your take on that. But, but the way it is now, it's talking about small, medium, and large. And are you there? Is that it? Yeah, no, just keep going down. Yeah, like it talks like more than twenty, less than forty, like you know what I mean? It tries to define these things. Because I think at the time, that board wanted to make these pathways.
Yeah.
But they never were executed properly and they don't work because it's all just a zone change. And, and that's totally fine, but you can't be like twenty or less. It's a different zone change. It's the same thing. It doesn't matter to us. Whether it's twenty or a hundred, it's the same zone change process. They have to propose it to you.
Yeah.
So we want to just clean that up. So that's the senior citizen one. Um, the next one is another PDD thing. Three, thirty-one, fifty-eight is, um, we were, because we've been talking about mixed use and so we did like a code search, like mixed use, see where it appears. And there used to be a mixed use PDD. So anything referring to mixed use is referring to this PDD that doesn't exist anymore. So we need to eliminate that.
So the town got rid of the PDD code provision, but these are just.
These are things that are telling people, oh, if you want to apply as this, you apply as a PDD. And it's like, well, you go to do that and you'll hit a brick wall, basically. It doesn't exist.
At anywhere those letters appear in the code.
Right, and that's another spot. So, and then it's just a general catch-all. I'm going to just do a word search, the whole code. And just find everything that says Plan Development District that's, that's referencing it and just give you a code that says eliminate references to PDDs. Um, okay, so the mixed use zoning is another topic for another day, but that's just on our list, our to-do list. And it's whether or not it's an overlay district, a special use permit, you know, that remains to be seen how you want to handle it. We've said out loud in public, you know, we think like a, like the same way, a floating zone, like an SC forty-four or multifamily PRD, mixed use would just be another one. I would just do it that way. So it's just a general code. Um, but that's my recommendation. On the use table of commercial sale solar, this came up in the Battery Storage Steering Committee that we were talking about how at a certain point in time, the state kicks in ORAS Office of Renewable Energy Siting and that's over twenty megawatts. And the commercial solar code, when it was advertised, it was twenty megawatts or less to keep people out of that whole huge sighting. But the cap itself didn't go in the code, so we just need to fix that and add it. And then the other recommendation is if you see that bottom where Seth's mouth, mouse is, we have X across the board that no commercial solar is allowed. It's, I'm sorry, it's microscopic. See how it says X with a little asterisk? We are recommending that it not be X, but it be special exception. And then let's just like revisit all that. Like we just want to make sure you're, it's where you want it to be recently. There's been a lot of, um.
I think, I think far on the solar, I think it might make sense to wait until we see where our battery storage code is going and do them kind of at the same time.
Okay, that's fine. But I just want to put it on your radar.
Because now that, now we're talking about projects that have both, so I think we should make sure that both codes work together.
Yeah, that's great. I just, yeah, we're just, when we're trying to do our to-do lists, I just want to have a complete list here. Some, the rest of these things have, are really coming out of current planning. Um, so one is a man-made pond, how you want to regulate them, i- if at all. Are they structures? Are they wetlands?
I go to a lot of ponds and I have seen some ponds people make care of them. The ponds in East Hampton are more like regulated. And when you make a pond, you end up with wetlands alongside of them.
Right.
Then you get a lot of wildlife that comes in it and if the pond's not taking care, you get algae. There's one in Bridge Hampton I go to, the neighbors, and the neighbor doesn't not take care of the pond. And actually the other neighbor put aerators in it because it's all full of algae, but you still got wildlife going down drinking out of water. It's not very healthy.
Mosquitoes.
Right, so east, I, we have a note here, East Hampton regulates ponds greater than six feet long slash wide and greater than eighteen inches deep. They call that a swimming pool. Which is weird, but I, you know, it's just basically giving you like, what does East Hampton do? Teresa Mason put that in there.
Right now, we don't regulate ponds at all.
No.
So you can put a pond of any size on your property.
Yeah.
And I think people don't understand too, you're getting yourself down a slippery slope there because if it's in existence for a certain amount of years, the DEC then classifies it as wetlands and you can't get rid of it.
And then it's a setback issue to your house and stuff like that, yeah.
So I, I mean, I honestly think, I think ponds should be regulated over a certain size. Maybe you're putting in a little coy pond.
Kind of like a code search and see how, other than East Hampton, how they regulate it and give you some options.
They have fantastic script for it and that's a good slide.
Yeah, we should definitely do that sooner.
I mean, you're, because you're also talking about a safety issue, right? I mean, your swimming pools have to be fenced off and you have to keep, you know, have stuff to keep children out. So if you have a pond that's, you know, four feet deep and twelve feet across, it's.
That's a really good point.
Child safety.
It's another safety issue. Okay, so that's on the radar. Um, the next one is three, thirty-one, sixty-seven, I. So people are required to get development rights or TDRs or Pine Barren credits for certain purposes. And then they obviously have every right to ask for a variance from the ZBA, but it, they sort of get a variance and then you're having a density, you know, where you create a code and say, well, you need a development right. That person then goes to the ZBA and says, I can't find a development right and they're given relief, which is, zoning is only valid because of the ZBA and giving that relief. So I want to make that clear, but it, maybe it doesn't belong in three thirty. Maybe it's not something you get relief from. Maybe they come to you, is my point.
Doesn't the town have TDRs?
We do, but I mean, you know, they, they, whatever happens, there's a lot of relief and it's sort of becoming very routine. Where it's becoming like, oh, you know, let's waive the credit. So even though you're arguing here about how important it is to keep development rights and things like that for like, let's say, an ADU or other reasons. All it is, is an action of the ZBA that negates that. So maybe that's not the place for it. Or maybe if they want to be waived, it goes elsewhere out of chapter three thirty, a zoning requirement and it's in a separate section.
Yes.
I agree with that.
Okay. Um, the next one is three, thirty-eighty-four, D. HOHC, which is the, these are transition zones. Like so, if you ever hear me talk about like you have a village business and the buildings are up against the road, right? Like, and then as you go out of what's your main street core, it sort of starts to step back. The HOHC zones are that transition zone and they're supposed to be these little cute buildings. And what we're finding now is that, um, you'll see it in Bridge Hampton in the historic district, you know, an HOHC historic home was demolished and put a real big building. And it's not just for this, it's for other ones too. But we, in that review, we came to realize that they don't have a pyramid requirement in HOHC. So that's how people are maxing out in the, what's supposed to be a cute little transition district from a Hamlet center is getting maxed because you're missing a pyramid requirement. So we think you should, we're just going over our little code.
It could be a pyramid, so.
Yeah.
Is there any way to get, to, to change that in a way that satisfies our purposes, but not necessarily speaks to the architecture? Because what we're seeing is people are building houses that look like pyramids. I, you know, you can kind of tell it's a pyramid. And, you know, we would want a different style of architecture, but I, I understand what you're saying. You know, but we don't want totally maxed out huge.
I mean, you could do it by floor area ratio. That's another like sort of way of, uh, creating a proportional sized building on a lot. So we can show you that. There's other ways. It's not always just pyramid. Pyramid is like that, you know, so you're not, it's for light and air, right? So you're giving.
Where your property is.
Yeah, but, um, there's other ways to go about that.
Okay.
Which I would say floor area ratio, what's another like pyramid?
The pyramids.
I mean, I honestly think like we, these are all good things and there's so many of them that I think we should just start kind of plugging away on separate work sessions for getting more into depth on each one.
Yeah, so we can do that. I just want to give you the overall, you want to use my time today instead of just drill on one to be like, there's a lot.
Yeah.
And just make sure, this, confirm this list is a good one and then we'll start coming in, you know, maybe.
I mean, there's sound reasoning for all of it. I mean, there's sound reasoning for all of it, so it's.
You might wanna move on some of those quicker than others depending.
Like, so maybe we should each look at this in our time and prioritize to us what we would like to.
That would be wonderful. Uh, yeah, so the um.
And the next step would be to give us a draft of the markup, redline draft of what the code changes would be.
So, and we have it for much of these already, so we just didn't wanna. Just do these one offs and have to do a work session for every single one unless. I can email everybody the redline and then you can say, these look fairly easy and routine, you can. Schedule them and these are things that we think should be a work session. This was a floor area of accessory apartments, you know, I think that's part of that whole A D U discussion. There's a separate section in the code about, this is accessory apartments. I wanna say that's um. In H O H C, which is, you get like, there's this section of the code. Oh no, it's, yeah, there's a section of the code that says. In H O H C, you're, you have three thousand square feet of a building. And you can get up to six thousand square feet of a building if you do an accessory apartment upstairs. But then it sort of takes up. So say I want, okay, I'm gonna put my six thousand, then, I'm sorry, I'm on one sixty two point eighteen A. It's just clarifying this section of the code.
And the accessory apartment square footage could trigger another accessory apartment. Is this the one?
Go down a little bit. There's this whole section here is like, if you wanna do more than three, it's an incentive. So get affordable apartments, that was why they did it, so they said, you get three, that's it, if you want six. You can have six, but, but then they say, but the rest of the balance has to go to the apartment, so the person doesn't get anything out of it, they only just get apartments. So it doesn't make any sense, so I'll show you, it'll be easier when I show you, but it doesn't make sense.
It's happening in Bridge Hampton.
Yeah, but also that, that's why they keep asking to be negated from the apartments, because then they, they wanna use the floor area and give you the apartments. But it's like, in the code, it's one or the other, the extra floor area you get is for the apartments, it's not for you. And then you get apartments, it's like spent on the apartments. Doesn't make any sense, so. So we'll fix that. We were just saying the use table should really like change with the changing times, we're using a, a standard industrial code from the nineteen, nineteen seventy two. And they did not have electric vehicle charging back then, so we need to add that to our use table.
And actually, it's a pretty good idea, because the Maddowville gas stations put.
Yeah, and also, you know.
So like this would cover like the Tesla charging station in the middle of King Cullen parking lot.
Well, right, they just are um like accessory now, but they're not, there's no, nothing around it, yeah. Right, so there's nothing about that.
Requirements when you do this. My wife got it. Have to park her car, we can, they go into different stations. And the biggest problem of a lot of the stations is no garbage cans, and it's looks like a dump.
Really?
The one in Bridge Hampton, it's like, the garbage, we go there once a week and it's garbage all over, the same garbage.
Well, because people are sitting there charging their cars with nothing else to do, so they clean out their car.
I mean, so there's like cops, boxes, and no one like is patrolling the area at all, I don't know if that's a town lot, town parking lot or.
So maybe you have to apply for it as an accessory use, and then in it, and to get that approval, you have to add garbage or.
It's like, it's filthy, and you can smell it, like people going to bathroom behind.
So what is it you're gonna change for that one?
We're just gonna add electric charging as an actual thing in our code. And then it's a little bit of, if you want some regulations around that. Or it can only use so much of your required parking.
Exactly, because that's the other problem, like you have King Cullen where now there's cars parked in these spots for hours, and. That parking is utilized for businesses and stores that people are in and out of, and now you're taking up that spot for another business use.
Right, oh, I mean presumably that's the person patronizing the place too, so they're. Parking, charging and going to get a slice of pizza or something.
Would it have any impact on the accessory use for the, you know, cause we're having all the C stores, but that has parking requirements. Also, and if we're gonna, if you're gonna have to split the parking, they're gonna have to reduce.
Yeah, you're gonna have to like, or you're gonna say.
You can only have so many.
You can only have so many, or only, yeah, so only so many, like. Percentage of your required parking can be dedicated to E V. Or you allow more parking for E V, you know.
That's what you might have to do, cause you have to make it an incentive. For one over the other, so then you'll go, forget it.
Because if somebody was left with a choice, they'd want more store than more area for parking, you know, so that's the thing.
And I just, I, I know this is really getting into the weeds, but it's also important that we not just have Tesla charging stations, but also other. Types of charging stations, cause there are.
I know, everybody can use. Only Teslas can use the Teslas, sorry.
But you have to buy a particular connectivity in order to do that, and yeah, it, it, it gets a little. Um, difficult, and I have a hybrid, so sometimes it's nice to have the ability to just plug in. It's like smart source or something like that, the Southampton Village has some of the ones that are more universal, so.
That may be a great climate energy community thing, to spend money on, like to get some more like. Adapters for people or or regular, you know, the kind that are.
That's how we, that's how we got them in Bridge Hampton, those were grant monies.
Right, so that could be a good thing for that. Yeah, uh, we, I remember having that meeting with Tesla and being like, not everybody has a Tesla, so we need to have some regular ones.
Tesla has to change.
Um, commercial park fees, planning board is recommending like, I don't really understand that, I'll sit with them. In a work session, not sure what they are envisioning.
Which one?
Commercial park fees, I don't know what they mean by that. Because that's really a residential subdivision thing, but maybe. Typically, like, there is no offsite improvement with a commercial thing, like your commercial. If you're asking them to do an offsite improvement, that's usually um something in a zone change.
Similar to Riverside Overlay District.
Which is also an incentive zone, so that's not, I don't know. Also, asked by the uh planning board require a pre-application review before that going to get variances Z B A. I think you'll get a lot of pushback because it takes so long at the Z B A as it is right now, I'm not sure about that one. But.
You think what?
That people, like a pre-application before variances, people do that now, we get a pre-app. We write, you're gonna need variances, and then they go to the Z B A. But that's at their discretion, they could just go straight to the Z B A, that, because they know what variances they need, they don't have to come and get a pre- pre-app.
Do those changes then? Can those, can those variances change based on what the planning board says?
Well, that's what this says here, and they can.
Bring them back, and that's.
Be proactive, come to the plan, but, but code.
But then you have to wait to get on the planning board's schedule and wait to get on the Z B A.
Wait to get on the Z B A, but I'm not against it.
I, I like it, you know, very often applicants will sit in front of the planning board and say, well, I already got these variances, so, you know. Please approve what I'm doing and, you know, cause this part's already done, and then it kinda hamstrings the planning board, and we don't wanna do that.
I think you're right, I think that's why they're saying that.
Uh, but are you, are you, um, is the calendar for the Z B A longer to get onto than the planning board? So wouldn't you just put yourself, if you're basically, you know, you're gonna need some type of variance, wouldn't you just put yourself on both? And then so maybe the answer to that is you go to the planning board, and then you go to the Z B A, and then you get like an expedited. Calendering back to the planning board, cause they've already seen your application?
Maybe, yeah, we can, I really would like to work more on the Z B A process to streamline that next.
Well, we also need to look at all the stuff that's coming into the Z B A and and. Backlogging when it's just basically should be almost an as of right thing now, because we, we're doing it so regularly.
Right, we should change the. So we can talk to.
Which particular part, I missed the beginning.
I'm just, just, I, I talked to Katie about potentially looking at. Um, the, the requests that are coming into the Z B A that are, a lot of them, and that they're, they're all being.
Nothing specific.
No, nothing specific, I would just like to know, cause I'm sure there are things that they see all the time, that, that's basically almost should just be an as of right thing now, because. They approve it so regularly that.
Code amendment, I know Janice brought code amendment to the board to address those things, that she's saying.
Yeah, like if everybody in, you know.
Like when I did the deer fencing for, for Ag, yeah.
But, but isn't, isn't it true though, that every, every application is different, everything, everything being considered. Has context to the specific area, region zoning. And I just think that if we're doing this, you know, there are also a lot of concerns that I get from constituents that say. How is this happening, you know, why is this going to the Z B, why are they getting this variance when, you know, they weren't prepared with their application and X, Y and Z? So I kinda like the idea of a pre-screening to kind of at least prepare. The applicant in a way that helps inform the Z B A more, and also provides. The constituents with the trust that what's coming before the Z B A is in fact reviewed in a, in a, in a more in-depth manner. I, 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 because I think that I'm getting the opposite.
You want the pre-submission before the Z B A? Before the Z B A? In front of the Z B A.
But we don't wanna slow anything down.
They need to have a prioritized back, back to the planning board.
So let's, we can dive, I think this is a whole work session.
The notice requirements on the zoning board are different than the planning board, right, or, or are they the same, that's a question.
What? Well, it comes down to a sub, noticing are the same, but when you're in a subdivision, this says subdivision, so we're talking about like. You have a lot and you wanna make it two lots and, you know. This, something is needing a variance, so we can talk about like, well, what's the routine one, like, are we talking about like. In our twenty, the side yard setback is twenty feet, and every single person in our twenty is really at fifteen. Make change a code of the side yard setback being fifteen, like we could do that analysis on G S.
I, I like what they're saying there.
You know, but. As a pre-app, that's fine too, so let's have a whole work session on how to like.
Or also if it's, if it's two, if it's like a major subdivision, or something that's gonna be really, you know. There's, there's gonna be a lot of facets to it, then I could see it going to the planning board, but if it's something that you know you're gonna need a variance for, you should just be able to go get your variance.
Mo- most of the large subdivisions have already been subdivided.
Well, and also people don't wanna be like, oh, the Z B A, oh, I gotta go to the planning board, oh, I gotta go to the Z B A, like, we need more like integration and like collaboration.
Yeah, I just want them with the process to.
Yeah, um, par- uh, parking behind buildings, we'll take a look at that, that's another recommendation by the planning board for all business districts, in some cases that. That makes a whole lot of sense and in others, it doesn't, so we'll have to take a look at that.
Aren't those. Did you say those are design guidelines?
Yeah, definitely, so that's more in the design guidelines, E V charging, this is again. We don't have it in our parking schedule, so that comes back to that E V. Such, I'll just combine those two. Um, pre-submission conference, we have, so in that vein of like people knowing at the earliest possible time. We have, we created a new thing called a pre-submission conference, and then the planners. Um, issue a report, and I guess the planners are asking to extend the report timeframe deadline, so. From forty five days to sixty two, so if you don't, the way it works is, if you didn't issue a report. They default can just move forward, so if you miss the deadline, they just default move forward without your report. The, the planners really don't miss deadlines, I, I would. Absolutely say they have been consistent for the past twenty years, and even when I was doing it, everybody gets their stuff done. They're getting their reports done, if they're not, you'll hear about it, I'm sure.
So why do you think they're?
But they're asking, because the subdivision application requirements, everything says sixty two, except this one section. So they're just asking it to be the same, but they do it as soon as possible, so. I could bring Claire Shea in also to talk about that. But that's their recommend, they're asking.
Send a bad message to the public, like, for, you know.
Taking longer? Perhaps, but at the same time, you know, they have their own workload issues too.
And they, to be honest, they would get an extension if they went through the process of having to put it on the calendar and ask for the extension, because the applicant's not gonna wanna. Say no to an extension and then come back to them with the plan, so it just, it kind of, you're not, you're not losing anything by giving them the days, you know what I mean?
Yeah, um, then we're down to. Uh, we were talking about this, and this is just a random, but it's important, the e-bike charging stations. You know, having like multi, and well, we're getting, we're seeing a lot more multi-family come our way, and I think that uh, we should codify the requirement. To put like e-bikes outside, you know, outside of homes, you end up having like fires and stuff like that, when people are storing their. E-bikes in their homes or in a storage unit potentially, so um, just in our multi-family section, we don't have anything about. Cause these are new things to us, so if we could codify like.
So you wouldn't, so you would give, have them have a place outside to charge the e-bikes?
Yes, if, say you live in an apartment complex and you have an e-bike.
Doesn't allow them in apartment buildings.
Right, you're not supposed to have it in your building, but they're expensive and someone may get the idea that they're gonna bring them inside and. We're just saying if we, say in a site plan, say the planning board is um, planning this, they would put it on the site plan. Um, the site disturbance plans in the A P O D, this, this takes up an extreme amount of time on the planning board agenda. Seth can speak to this, cause he's been the one that's dealing with it, um, where the um, app, somebody comes in with a site disturbance. Um, application, they, they've over cleared, now they have to get a vegetation plan approved. We do that internally, and it's like a kind of a, the plan board just approves it, they are recommending it just be done administratively, so the same way administrative site plans are approved.
For mitigating over clearing?
Yeah, what I wanna do is this, and I put it in the fee schedule and I wanna, I'll planning fees as a new fee in the budget. Is that we don't confirm the limits of clearing in the first place, and then people go over clearing. So, and it's been a kind of a struggle with the building inspectors doing it, so the planners are more suited to go do a. Um, inspection, just like all the other site inspections we do, you just go to the site before they're given their building permit and we. Confirm that their limit of clearing fence is there, so that they don't over clear. What they do is, denude the site of all vegetation, so they have all the space in the world, build what they want, and then come in with a site. Disturbance plan and say, here's my plan to re- re-vegetate, we're saying. We shouldn't do it this way anymore, we should require them to put up a limited clearing fence, we check it, and then they get the permit, and then they're. Building within the confines of what they should, and that should get rid of half these site disturbance plans in the first place, and then the rest of them will deal with. Administratively.
And then you're not just planting, you know, little one gallon blueberry plants, you have existing natural vegetation that's established, that's not gonna die in a year.
And that was the point of A P O D.
Yeah, I mean, I, we should have a tree clearing, you know, code. And I did speak with Jim about it at one point, there's a list, and I said, add to the list if there's any other code changes that you think we should consider.
Clearing code, Mike fixed the tree clearing code, we have like, we have plenty of that, so let's have a whole work session on, that sounds wonderful. Um, twenty years later, I've been trying to get a tree clearing code for a long time.
One of the things that people do as well is over clear, um, build without permits, and uh, the home is able to be sold. And then the new homeowner discovers that they purchased a property that's over cleared, or that there is uh, there was work that was done without permit. And then they come in with as-built uh, variances or whatever they need from, from the town to try to make this right. And, you know, they kinda say, I didn't know and all that, so that kinda begs the question about updated C O Os when. Homes are purchased or sold.
Yeah, well, that's, that's another whole ball of wax.
But that would also eliminate a number of applications before the zoning board, because people come in and, you know, they're very upset because they bought a house with a. Portico that's, you know, in the setbacks, and now they're trying to legalize it. And uh, you know, so the zoning board asks, how much does it cost to fix it, and you know, so they weigh these things and. Uh, so as-built are a problem as well as over clearing with new homeowners.
Um, we also need to close the loophole of um, clearing a site before you have a site plan and.
Yes, that's a really good one. And that happened uh, site before, before you submit, cause the way the code reads, it's during a site plan review, you can't clear.
Yeah, so now they're going and they're clearing. Then they're coming in for a site plan review.
We definitely need to.
I, I could just, uh, uh, along the lines of what you just said, as a, you know, that's a hot topic, hot button one. And if I could add another one to that one, which isn't on this list, it's, you know, many people have argued that people should um. Be required to put an I A system in upon sale or transfer, like that they, you know, you're losing all these opportunities. To put in the, the nitrogen. Like that they, you know, you're losing all these opportunities to put in the the nitrogen.
I just, I just, the more you go down this road of requirements for sale.
Yeah.
The less affordable you're making units.
Yes, but I mean, right, but just to put it out there, that's another one of those.
I think I think the the code update for clearing a site before a site plan is definitely another one that has to, we have to look at sooner rather than later in addition to the ponds.
Okay, I'll put those up on the top.
And one other thing was, you know, we we probably have something about planting trees that, you know, are gonna abut our right of way. They have to be set back a certain amount. But I do have some people that have said, what about on the property lines? You know, if somebody plants too close or on the property line, then the neighbor's responsible to bring people in to trim the trees back. You know, they can get so high. So maybe there's something there too.
Are you, are you talking about um, I'm sorry, I don't.
As long as we're doing the trees.
Like if you plant a tree right on your property line and your neighbor now has to deal with the overhanging branches and stuff, it ends up being their responsibility.
Sometimes, you know, if it's private, you have to get higher stuff.
Yes, yes, yeah. Like our neighbors, like we're friends with them. So they are, they just come over to our side and do it, but not everybody does.
I was told we may be preempted by state law with respect to that.
Something that spoke to that, because I know we have to do that, but on one side, not the other. It's like everybody has to.
Oh.
So there may need to be.
It's on your own side.
There may need to be a change in the state law.
But state law would prohibit us from having a law that says you can't plant the root ball within a certain amount of feet of the property.
It's gonna be different for every tree you're planting.
Really?
There's upright trees that, I mean, look at them. There's like, there's, there's oaks, there's, there's ornamental trees that are, you can plant them right on the property line and they're not going to go out more than like hawthorns. And then you get into green giant arbres, which are gonna get enormous. It's all different types of trees. So you would have to know the mature state of every tree that you're planting to know what your setback to your property line is, which is almost impossible.
I don't think you're preempted by state law though in that context of saying identifying the trees that you want. You would have to go through a whole.
Whole list of all the trees.
The question is who cuts the trees?
You're responsible for what's on your property.
Edges.
Okay. And then there's just two more, just to get through this list. Um, uh, you know, on the list of litany of administrator duties, there are things I'm allowed to approve. Every once in a while, we'll get a court order that says, you know, this has to come back. And that would be, you know, like you allow me to approve things that you've already approved of. You know, like um, I went out to bid and now the Parks Department is doing it. You already know all about it and I and you've signed off. I can sign off on the site plan. It's it's that same uh thing. So and then the last one is a change in tenancy. We don't have a definition and people come in and come for change of tenancy, which is fine. But we had a like, we we don't want someone to come in as a vacant parcel and then say, I'm changing my tenancy to this. Like you have to come and establish a use before you can change your tenancy. You know, they're trying to go through this change in tenancy process, which is meant to be, you've already established a use. And now you're just changing from this use to that use. Where vacant, it that's a loophole for a vacant person, a vacant lot. To be like, I'm changing my tenancy. It's like you never had a tenancy, you weren't anything. But there's no law that stops that. So we just want. Need a little definition and a little certainty on that. I'm sorry?
Both for that and commercial?
That's for commercial. This is a commercial change in tenancy, but it also relates to agriculture.
And it's not.
So when when you have, like you're just a random piece of property and you always were, like it's woodland, you're not a farm. You're not farming till you establish yourself as a farm. And then we go on from there. And then you go, well, I wanna now on the farm, I wanna be um, you know, whatever else you could be in that zone. But you can't just be like, I'm, this is just some random vacant woodland. Now I'm changing my tenancy and circumvent the site plan process. That's what I wanna stop from that.
That's not, and that excludes pre-existing uses.
Yes, that's, that's a, that's a use. If if it's pre-existing, it's there. But if it's vacant, we don't want someone to use that inappropriately. It's just, you know, it's sorta like, there's loopholes everywhere. And uh, sometimes, you know, we can appreciate how people just wanna get stuff done. But other times we're, you know, this is, we want to be sure to protect people around those changes. So that's everything.
Thank you.
So far.
Good, very good. That's exactly what we need to do.
Okay, great.
Jade, was there anything you wanted to add to that? Thank you for working on that.
So Dave, we wanna stick around for the pattern book talk?
Were you working on that too with her, the code changes?
Well, a bunch of us are working on the code changes, yeah. Janice just wanted me to be here, but we got stuck in traffic.
Yeah, so Janice, I would think anything that's like a simple code amendment, where you can just redline an existing code, I would go ahead and give us that. And then anything that's a new code or anything like that, maybe give us examples of other.
I'm sorry?
No, I was just saying, anything that's like a simple, like redlining the code that we currently have or changing it, just give us that. And then and then the other stuff. Maybe just having somebody prepare like what other municipalities have.
Sure, yes. Okay, that's good. No.
You can say.
Do you wanna stay? No, you don't have to. I'm just offering if you want to. You're good. You ran in here. It's fine. Thank you. Yeah, we got this letter already. That's not.
They're already doing it. Planning board just takes theirs and stamps it. Because they don't, they don't have the expertise to know what even their.
Who depending?
Yeah, like it's.
But the plan is.
Is that what they're forming?
Yeah, but the plan is, what are they gonna do? Tell the, tell our planning staff that they're wrong?
Well, no, yeah.
They're being handed a plan from the planning staff. They're just, right, the the site clearing? You guys are, you guys are doing the re-veg plans?
No, they proposed something to us.
But then you guys look at it to make sure it's.
Yeah, the planners look at it, we we.
The planning board just has to say, okay, we agree with the planning department.
Pretty much. It's like a rubber stamp. We we like go in the field, we look at it, we talk to Marty, we look at best practices, we, you know, we do all that.
Of course you did.
I'm sorry. I'll just, yeah, let you know which where we're going. It was, we all got them.
Uh, everybody does this, that they just decide to. Pause and we're only half an hour behind.
Sorry.
No, I saw you.
With all this stuff.
You're doing a good job.
It's a lot to get through. You should have been.
If I had to do a work session for every one of these, you wouldn't finish until the end.
No, yeah, that should have been, but you should add an hour to go through.
Stick out that early and that might really change before I came to work.
Alright, what's this? Let's see.
So now we should go through the pattern book and uh.
I just go, you know, I do have a lot of things that are provided, but um. Go page two.
So I think start, just to start the overview for the benefit of anyone who hasn't seen this. Um, we just.
No, it's a blue page. The ground map for the panel.
Yeah, I see those golds there. Just scroll down so you can see all of those. So I always like to go back to what's the point of this, starting with, you know, the goal. So this part I noticed we wanted to fix. So it says create, this was to create a framework. And it says for future form-based codes. So we know we were trying to take out things that we missed. You know, that were referring to the downtown overlay district. So that is needing to be revised. So creating a framework for, I would just say, future development, right? Strike out form base, so just for future development. I'm on this blue page, over number two. Just like why, the why, the why of it all is uh, let me say. Two, to encourage, so the pattern book's point, the primary goal, encourage the development of a walkable, thriving, family-friendly. It says district, but you know, you could say downtown, Hamlet, whatever. Three, embrace and complement the historic fabric and context of Hampton Bays. Four, create the framework for pedestrian-friendly development and attractive storefronts that will allow for a mix of uses over time while providing a consistent and pleasing experience. Five, encourage more consistent setbacks along streets with focused and more usable open space. I don't know if that's still true. Six, encourage a consistent architectural and geometric language, which will.
What, what, you know, what do you think I mean with focused and more usable?
I mean, you have a thirty-eight acre park, that's your open space.
Yeah.
So maybe they mean that focused and more usable open space.
Accessible?
Maybe it should say with focus and more accessible, good ground park.
Right.
Okay.
That might mean, because how it says now, it might mean between the buildings.
Yeah.
And the walkways.
Yeah, you know, and then encourage a consistent architectural and geometric language, which will allow for flexibility and diversity over time as the community needs change. So so I just wanna confirm like, that's the point. So anything after that should reflect those goals, right?
Sure.
Okay, good. And then, so so you had a public hearing and you heard, you know, people saying some stuff about good and bad. So um, so we just wanna get to like, what is the the document that you want as a final version?
The setbacks on the streets? Is that on current streets or future streets or both?
Well, originally it was both because the idea was as, let's say you were creating something on Main Street, Montauk Highway. The original form-based code wanted the buildings to eventually move back a little bit to create more sidewalk area in the front of them. So if that's still a goal, then it would be streets, new, any street.
So like where K. Kellum, that Trump, it would be back farther than that?
No, I mean on the, on the north side.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just using that, using that as an example as space.
Yeah, well, like you have, you know, like the antique store or whatever, that's kinda setback. But then you have other things that are right up, like gators or whatever, and it's right up. If if, let's say that building in fifty years, somebody wants to, would you want them to build something new a little further back to create more sidewalk? Because you're never gonna get more right of way and you're never gonna get more roadway on. So the only thing you can do is move those buildings back if you want more sidewalk there. The other thing was just leave them alone, keep it that way. That's the way it is and create the new streets coming back. However you configure them and then set it back how, you know, create the sidewalk widths you want there, because they're brand new. So.
So you have the, the, so you have the zero lot line option, but it doesn't mean they have to use it. But you wanna limit the setback to no more than.
Right, we had like facade zones and stuff like that in the original thing, which we.
Because say like that, that wide, if the person wants to build a restaurant and wants wants to put table outside.
Right.
They would have to set it back.
Right.
I think that's in here.
Yeah, okay. So you know, it's still locate your site, review the layout recommendations, review the guidelines, review your parking, general architectural, select a style and work on your landscaping. These these things already happen at the planning board level, but when somebody says, well, I wanna do, you know, my corporate franchise prototype, and we say we want something that looks more like it fits in Hampton Bays, and they say, I'm not doing that. We have something that says, yeah, war, because we want it to look really cute and nice.
Yeah, we don't wanna like.
That's the point.
Big box store.
Right.
Street type A looks good to me.
Great. So um, you know, the street layout, the patterns on page eleven, so. This we kept in here because it's still really important to understand that you're not gonna have a walkable downtown if you have nothing to walk to. And if you have eighteen hundred feet of length to walk, it's not very, you're just gonna take your car. And you have nothing in between and nowhere to go. Like you're just gonna go from point A, get back in your car and go to point B. Because why would you walk eighteen hundred feet and then go all the way back to your car? It's just, but if you had things to do, then you would park and then you would go and integrate with downtown. Yeah. So we kept this picture in to show like the ideal block length is two hundred feet. So we're not necessarily saying you have to have it this way, but you do need some kind of regular rhythm. Whoever comes in needs to account for block lengths. So we did keep that in. Anybody have any objection to keeping that in? It's okay. The street widths, I think the most objectionable thing comes to talking about on page seventeen. Keep going, seventeen? Oh, I'm sorry, this one. Keep going. I don't think the page numbers in the book translate. Yeah. This was the layout we worked with historical concepts when we said, you know, you do what you think just as a sample. And we said, we could say sample layout. The point of putting it in this picture was to show how buildings define and frame the outdoor room of the street. Um, you know, and they fluctuate. This is, if you don't want it in there or somebody thinks this is objectionable, I mean, we take it out. I just.
I don't, I think it's nice to have it as a vision, but I think that the issue was the 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 last street connecting the two side streets to the back. It almost, it looks as though we endorse that kind of a concept with the street back there and maybe we're not even allowed to do that. So is there a way to just?
Overflow out, yes, you can. But if you wanna take the picture out, that's okay.
But I like, you know, I like the picture, right?
Well, there is a, there is a little, you know, statement disclaimer on the bottom there that says that the streets can fluctuate. The form can fluctuate.
Yeah.
I mean.
We can add more verbiage to say this is a sample.
Right.
Was an exercise or we could just, or it is, it appears in two times. It appears here and it appears later as a sample feasibility study. You can keep it later as the feasibility study.
We we.
We were just looking for filler really, because whatever was on this page before was from the form-based code, so we took it out. So we could take it out.
Yeah, but can you, do you have the ability to just uh
Cut it off?
Eliminate that street back there?
If you really, if you, but now you can't, look, it it it's showing this street. This street is fine. This is the park road. This street is there.
That street's fine.
Yeah.
So it's, the way the visual looks, it looks like it's going, and it is, it would, but there's bollards here and here, so you couldn't do that.
But it doesn't matter with the bollard. No, I'm talking about the street that's new here along the.
It's needed to get to parking.
Cold sack.
No, I understand, but I'm trying to say there's two streets and that diagram doesn't exactly.
This has a part of the cul-de-sac, so it's including the top. That's what she's saying.
You're saying running along the side of the park, correct?
Yeah.
That's what this is.
I don't know why you, they're not seeing.
But you're not, I see it. I'm saying you're not seeing the slip street in that picture, that this is the normal street that you use.
I think the supervisor's asking, could we, could we eliminate that?
I think we're done, unless you wanna pay them any more money, we're done with any more.
You can't, you can't. You can't, you can't make it, an adjustment on the visual that you don't have, that, they didn't give you their work product, so to speak, for, that you could just.
I, I mean, honestly, I don't think people's problems are with the pictures.
I, I do, I feel like that's what they were saying, like it looks as though you're endorsing a road through the park.
There is a road through the park, but we're not, I mean, this is, this is, I mean, the language in here, this is, this is a pretty picture. That is, you know, depicts what, you know. You can write the words, this does not endorse putting a road through the park. Yes. Road.
Yeah.
You wanna write that? And then, this picture is not intended to endorse putting a road to the park road. Out, unless you want to, do it for overflow, that was. I just don't, I, 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 I just don't. It's a picture, it, it's.
That road.
It's a picture, that's a, that's a.
What would you charge us to just give us a revised picture without this back road in it?
Okay, I'll ask them.
What are they gonna charge?
Yeah, cause right now, cause this road is connected, it looks like it's connected. Right, right there.
Okay, I'll ask them to fix that. If they fix it, then it can be in here, and if they can't, then we should take it out.
They can do it. Although, you know, right.
The next, um.
Well, wasn't the issue, was there anything with page sixteen with this? Or it goes right to page twenty-two with the building height?
That's what I have, but I'm here to listen to what you have. The next thing is page, this one. Can we remove building height and just leave it for the code? Just let the building height? That's what I was gonna recommend, just take it out.
Take the whole page out?
Just have these parameters, you know.
Defined in the code.
They're trying to define the form, so they're trying to say, the ground floor ceiling should be ten feet, the upper floor ceiling eight. You know, you can just leave it, I think your best bet is to just take it out.
I mean, right now you have one to two and a half stories and thirty-five feet max. So that seems like that would.
They, they, you know, you don't wanna regulate within the pattern book, but the bigger point is that we want scale and proportion. That's, that's all, the whole theme here, scale and proportion, scale and proportion should be pleasing.
A tall golden stick and a gun.
Right. So it all comes down to scale and proportion, and that's what this is trying to do.
Uniform, so it looks like when you see it, it's like.
So what are you suggesting? To change.
Take it out.
To take it, so.
I would just remove the building height and address it in the code.
The, the fifty foot max is what triggered some bugs.
Obviously, it's not in the code, and that was the point, like you're codifying something in a pattern book that belongs in the code, so.
I would just address building height in the code.
So just take it out entirely, this and this.
But the, but the code doesn't exist.
I mean, or put, or just put in, instead of.
Why not put other graphics that are just samples of form and proportion?
And exactly.
I'd like some recommendation to be, to be there.
Cause if you're not careful, you're gonna have all flat.
That's right.
Yeah.
We don't want all flat with.
I, because the, there. I, I'm just thinking in terms of what this document serves as, which is, it's, it is architectural, right? It's about the design, it's about future development. And I'm aware of, you know, it's a very good document that Historical Concepts put together. But I'm also aware of other municipalities that have pattern books as well. And, you know, they outline zoning recommendations. I think that it's not like it's out of character of typical municipal planning in pattern books. You know, you look at Montgomery County, you look at Washington DC, there's, there's planning documents that they have that, that outline these specific criteria. I, I, I don't, I, 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 I really took a lot of the comments, I think they, they made a lot of sense with respect to, there needs to be a separate zoning document, I agree with that. Uh, but I also think we, we do have to provide some sort of basis within this document, given its function as being geared toward development and redevelopment and architecture.
So what if you do, what if you just do the graphic that, the graphic on the top, right? Where it has like the half-story, the sec-, you know, it. Why not a graphic like that with a visualization of how it's, so that we know that. Something that, that addresses height in, in the aspect of, we don't want square boxes, right? We want, we want aesthetically a, a pleasing.
If somebody wanted to put a clock tower in or something, that would stick up a little bit.
Exactly. Can I say, we don't wanna look like.
How are you gonna make these changes?
Well, I'm gonna go back to Historical Concepts.
Okay, so all of.
But we have other graphics for throughout the years, we can probably, you know, that was a custom picture they drew. But we have other things.
I would just like to talk about height as far as aesthetics, not so much as feet. You know what I mean, like I don't wanna, I don't wanna tie us into like.
Cause you need diversity in character.
Buildings.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That could be in the code, but we can do something in here that.
Maybe this is just, these pictures are best practices.
I just think this whole book.
And the letters comply, you know, talk about not numbers, but, you know.
Right.
Create a base middle top.
And that was my understanding of what this document was serving as, right?
It is.
Me too.
To, to just provide recommendations and also ensuring the community character. Because that was the major concern from constituents, was that we don't want whatever development occurs to go outside the scope of what we feel Hampton Bay should look like, so. And that's a, a great deal of what this study encompasses.
To that point, like I would, I would be comfortable saying, rather than going through this book point by point. I would be more comfortable saying, anything hard and fast that should be in the zoning, we just remove. And put that in the zoning.
That's really it, those are the only things.
So, everything else to me, like the street layout, that all says that it's, you know, recommended, or it doesn't say this is how it has to be. But I think the building heights and, and, is really the, and then once you get through that, it's all pretty much architectural patterns and that, I mean, this is.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody should change like the pitch levels and stuff, like, like there's some composition regarding cable groups and pitch composition that should stay.
You need that, you don't wanna all flat building.
Okay. On page fourteen, I just wanted to, in that little blue box at the bottom where it talks about cross-access infrastructure. On the other side. I think it should say it's encouraged, right, instead of it may be designed with components. Don't you wanna encourage the cross-access infrastructure?
Instead of maybe designed, you wanna say.
Where are we? Um, page fifteen at the bottom.
Oh.
In the blue box.
Is encouraged to be designed or? Is recommended to be designed? Should be designed?
We wanna encourage it, right, it's, or is, it's not, is it a rule, you know, I don't mean that you have to have it?
The plan board always requires it. Anyway.
Maybe should.
This is not, again, we wanna take out code type.
But that's fine.
Uh, we're encouraged then, if you don't wanna put in a zoning requirement.
Is encouraged.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, let me see, it just had a few things, so. Of course, the most important for the community was the one we just did, but, um. On. Okay, wait a minute. I had a note about the fixed awnings. Well, there can, it's on page forty, let me just see what I had here. We don't have a problem with fixed awnings or canopies extending into the right-of-way, the eight feet. Is there something in the zoning already about that? I mean, I know they wanna provide shade.
We don't have a problem with it.
It only, it's, it's maxed out at eight feet. And if you're gonna let people have outdoor dining, you kinda have to.
Yeah, I just feel like a canopy is different, I don't know.
Fixed canopy, maybe you could say that the removable awnings can, but fixed canopies shouldn't, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe.
Awnings. So cross out and canopies.
Thanks. And then. This is so, I'm sorry, but on page forty-four, the last picture, I mean, it's got the check mark, do you think that's a good look? Is that something historic or common that we should keep, or is that, just looks like out of balance?
What's that?
This one, this is the bottom picture here. I wanna get too much.
So it's a, it's, it's, it's a feature of some of like the downtown, I would, I'll, I'll say like in, like Sack Harbor, they have stuff like that.
Yeah?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so, here's one thing that, you know, now, more recently, I've seen stores putting in the accordion doors, and they're really nice because. You know, if it's bad weather, they're closed, but if it's nice, they have the tables outside and the accordion doors open, so it's really a nice feature, I think. But it seems like they're prohibited. So I just wanted to, on page, I had page forty-four that it looked like it was prohibited, so let me find what I was looking at. Oh, on the left side of the page at the very bottom, where it says prohibited. Um, sliding doors on a street-facing facade, would that capture the accordion doors? I don't know.
It might, yeah, I think you would have to. Say what kind of sliding doors are, it's like a, like, is it a six-foot sliding door or sliding door folds up to, into the wall?
Yeah.
Let me find out what they meant by that.
Yeah, because if it's just a regular sliding door, I would not want that, but if it's a sliding door, where, you know, opens the whole wall and goes into the wall.
Yeah, so, or you could even just say, if you don't, I'm asking you to say, this does not include accordion doors or something.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause I think people like those now, yeah.
During the summertime.
Okay, thank you, sure.
Anything else?
Oh. Should we, I think we should, on the, it's ten acres right in that one section, even though this is a lot more than that. Should we require any new, um, roads with street lighting to have underground utilities?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
So should we put that in here? Uh, this would be page seventy-four, I think, on the lighting. I mean, I, I think we should have it, I just don't know if it should go in here or if it's already in our code.
Code already requires for new, right?
It does, but it doesn't hurt to say it again somehow, somewhere. Street furnishings.
You have to also say what kinda lighting, don't want something very contemporary.
You want, yeah, lighting, well, the planning board would look at actually that and just say lighting.
Probably referring to our dark skies code as well.
I mean, look at what it says here, street lights similar to the image below. I mean, we don't want street lights to look like that.
Yeah, they may not, yeah, that's not.
Yeah, let's take that picture out.
Yeah.
We should just put a picture of the little streetlights that are in Hampton Bays that we have. Does everybody like those?
They are nice, yeah.
We did put new ones.
And, so we should say underground, yeah. Undergrounding the utilities and then LEDs should be required unless it's already, the lighting standards already require it and should be.
We have a whole lighting code.
Does the lighting code have the warm?
Yep, that's all different Kelvins.
The Kelvin max three thousand.
If you, we do say three thousand, if you wanted to make it even less, like twenty-seven hundred Kelvin, that would be great. That makes it more yellow.
I just don't think you should address it in this pattern book, I think we should, if we wanna change our lighting code, we change our lighting code.
Yeah, I just didn't.
I'll just say lighting, dark skies. Then you have one document that conflicts our code.
Cause it might change over the years.
Well, it's gonna get, it's gonna get lower and lower over the years.
The town's outdoor lighting standards should control, yeah. But I do hope we use the warm.
It should have reference to dark skies compliance, it doesn't have to be specific to Kelvin.
It says our town lighting code, which is dark skies.
Okay.
If we just updated last year.
But we didn't change the Kelvin standard.
What is it at, don't tell me?
No, it's at three, but we would really like it less, twenty-seven, twenty-three. The, the lower, the less blue, and the less blue light, the less jump light.
And by the way, also, it's, you know, anything over twenty-seven hundred Kelvin is actually harmful to nocturnal wildlife, so. There's also a benefit to.
Why don't I add that lighting code on my list here?
That would be great. That would be wonderful.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
All right, okay, so let's see, then page seventy-six, we had a comment, um.
What page?
Seventy-six. Yeah, seventy-six, it says no stamped concrete, where did I say that? I was wondering if you would wanna put in no stamped asphalt, or does the town like to have that options?
No, we don't like stamped asphalt. Stamped concrete and asphalt.
No stamped concrete.
Nope, it's already in here, can't have it. Where does it say that, it's like, I have a note that says page seventy-six, but they don't.
We were just in Philadelphia, you could do like the cobblestone with that. So annoying to walk on.
Stamped concrete is prohibited. So I know stamped asphalt is a little different, but do you wanna add?
Stained asphalt, got it.
And then, where does it say, seating must be located in the shade. Here, on the right.
Says should.
Should.
Yeah.
I mean.
It says seating should be located in the shade, complement the design of the streetscape, be high-quality and extremely durable. So that's not just in the shade, it's just sort of like.
And it says should.
You want it mandated?
It just says it should be located in the shade for comfort, you're saying some people wanna sit in the sun.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you're not gonna have trees everywhere that is gonna provide the shade, and if you wanna have the seating on the sidewalk facing each other.
I don't think anybody ever has said like, it's, that's shady, or that's too sunny, where we're looking at a plant.
You can't put your seating there, it's not too much sun.
I know, but it says it should be located.
If we're at that level, we have bigger problems.
It's a, it's a, um.
Well, but it says it.
Recommended, you know, and meaning for the comfort of the person, like if you're a designer, these are the design parameters.
Why don't you just change it to say seating should complement the design of the streetscape and leave the shading out of it?
I would prefer that, okay.
It's actually good, yeah.
I don't wanna limit people, it's, it's on page seventy-four too about that. Okay. Where, can you find it, where is it again? It's on page.
It's, that's right there. It's highlighted in blue, but then I take the blue off and just zoom in so we can see.
No, on page seventy-four, it appears as well somewhere, let me see. Oh, seating. Yeah, public seating should be located in the shade. I mean.
It's all should.
You wanna have. I just don't want people to be limited.
Well, it says preferably under the tree canopy, canopy, complement the design, be high-quality, extremely durable.
It does, it, I, I mean, just to.
Why don't you say when appropriate public seating, or when, when practicable?
I also think it also encourages, it, it encourages trees, and I think that that's actually a good thing, we should wanna have trees in our downtowns. So I think that in some sense, it's, it might actually be good to kind of imply that there should be some planting.
Okay, so that one will say when practicable, and the other one will just say, uh, whatever, seating should complement the design.
Okay. Oh, then on page, um, seventy-eight, I wasn't sure what this means, the under, the garden wall fencing, the fourth bullet. the garden wall fencing, the fourth bullet. I don't, I don't know what that means. Under fencing, a, a little bit of.
It becomes a structure at a certain point, so it has to conform to the setbacks. You can't put a, call it like, oh, it's a garden wall, and it's six feet, and it's in the right of way. Now you're in a building, we call it a structure, and you've gotta be set, you've gotta meet the setbacks. So that's what it's saying.
Behind the front facade though.
Because you shouldn't be putting walls in front of your building, so you have a building, and you may have a wall in front of your building, and it's saying, the wall and the fence go behind, or next to, or behind.
Right. It can't be over six feet.
In front of your front door.
Yeah, you don't put it in the front yard setback.
Facade meant the front of the building.
Yeah, so you don't wanna put a garden wall, walling off your building in the front yard setback, you've gotta be neck, you know, behind, this is my facade, this is my front facade, I don't wanna put a wall in front of that.
Like now, you can't.
Put it behind it. Right, does that make sense?
But if it's your property and you wanted a little white fence, cause you have a restaurant with some outdoor seating, and then you have an opening in the fence?
It says, a variety of wall and fence types are permitted, but anything greater than four feet along the right of way must conform to building setbacks and be behind the front facade. In other words, you should not be having four, six, five.
You don't want it higher than four feet.
Well, that's why, it says variety is permitted within the setback on the individual, but then the last one is saying over four. Now that's a different story.
So a thirty-eight inch high white picket fence is, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
And it's already in our code about the curb revealed from six inches.
I don't think so.
Do you want that in there? Eighty, it might be in the New York State DOT might give you a range.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that we have it codified.
Right.
I think the DOT has a range, but if we don't have.
But there's municipal deference.
So I don't know if it goes on page eighty, with the paving or somewhere, but I just think that's a good standard height that we should pull people to. And then, almost finished. Page eighty-four, um. The drainage. I didn't see anything, and maybe this is in the code somewhere else, so again, forgive me, cause I'm not all a hundred percent familiar with the code, but the, we shouldn't allow the downspouts to discharge onto a sidewalk.
You can't.
We had a problem with that in West Hampton Beach, and it was.
It's code, right, you have to maintain your water on, that's a SWIP plan, right?
Cause right now, it talks about, you know, the downspouts have to go discharge into the ground if possible.
Okay, let's put that, make sure that's clear. I'll talk to Tom.
Why not just put a disclaimer at the end of the pattern book that says, anything not covered here, or as it should be, or would be has to meet other town codes?
You can do that in the notice of adoption.
It should be.
So here it says downspout should be directed away from the foundations and connected to an underground system where circumstances permit. Which is good, but it doesn't say, you know, cause there's a lot of buildings that they probably already, page eighty-four, discharged onto the sidewalk.
Yeah, no, we don't want that.
But if it's already in the code, if you mention, maybe it's already in the code that.
Yeah, but it should be.
Let's just add that in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, last but not least. On, um, page ninety. Page ninety?
Yeah.
Okay. The, um. This is just my opinion, but those sweet gum trees are the ones that throw off those spiky little balls. And I think they get in the drains and cause problems, so you might not wanna recommend those. They are pretty, but they do have those spiky balls.
We, we have one in my backyard, my kids call them brambles, I don't know why they call them that, but they do, and they're everywhere.
Spiky balls not allowed.
Alright, so then we just have a slide about appendix A, what we're, oh, wait a minute, appendix A. I thought the trees were the last thing, but it isn't, oh, I know, wait, one more thing, with the trees. We should try to encourage people to plant the trees in between the storefronts, so that it doesn't block the signage. We did that in the village too, and, um. And then the last thing we have is about the sign guidelines, um. I think we should, unless it's already in the code, we should prohibit backlit signs.
Okay, we, that, I'm gonna add that, we should be put the sign on, sign code on, it's been amortized a million times. Oh, you are, okay.
Because this one has like.
To the list, and then you'll, okay.
I feel like this even last one, neon, neon signs, neon signs.
There are a lot of businesses that have them in Hampton Bays.
Yeah, well, we should amortize them out, you know, like give people fi- a certain amount of years to get rid of them, if that's what you're already working on, Cindy, I didn't know you were doing that.
Yeah, we're working on limiting sizes and what they're allowed and.
You know, there's, there's those, I don't know what they call them, reverse channel signs, so it looks like a little halo around the letters, those are fine. Or you could have a gooseneck over the sign, but I think it would be a good idea, in my opinion, it'd be a good idea to say, alright, in the next two years, three years, you've gotta get rid of those backlit ne- and neon signs, and no flashing. You know, it just makes it more elegant, tranquil.
Or you're just saying on the outside.
It either, well, I think if it's more than tw- is it, what is the rule, if it's more than twelve inches back, it's not considered a sign?
Something like that. We do have that, because the more you get these glass box, you know, even with the doors, now you can see right in, and then you could see uh, that, that happens, that does happen, so.
And there's probably already a limit on how many signs a bu- a commercial business can have, yeah.
Oh, definitely.
Alright, those are my comments, and then just the, um, the appendix on the feasibility study where we have all the pictures in, I mean, we I think we definitely should get to remove one oh one, that's the one that really highlights that road in the back.
And that one shows the bollards.
Yeah, but I don't think people trust the bollards.
Cause, cause the picture shows it goes, it goes.
And I don't know if it's true or not, but one of the speakers mentioned that, that since the park is CPF property, can you just put a road, can somebody put a?
We're not putting a road through, we're just trying to give you away that this parking lot is full for a concert or event. And you're getting everybody out, rather than having everybody go out this one way, it would allow you to, if you're going to Riverhead, to go out this back way and leave the park and just get out of the area. That's the only thing we were talking about potentially doing. I mean, I would honestly like to see bollards on the main street side too, so you could actually close this hole, actually, you can't, you have to leave one of them open, but where you could close it so that there would be one access point where you could have, like street vendors and street bears and.
Yeah, whoever's gonna do whatever they're gonna do in here, they'll probably need a traffic study, right, and maybe they have to be polite gear or something.
So take it out?
Well.
Take this picture out.
Would be helpful for people's comfort if this last image is not there.
Okay.
It's just a rendering anyway, you can't make anybody do it.
Great, any other comments or questions, concerns?
Great, thank you. Look at us, we're almost done. Actually, we are ahead of time. Yeah, ahead of schedule, even with all that, okay, thank you. Okay, we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Jess.
Alright, well, that brings us to the legislative updates. Who wants to get started today? Councilwoman Methnira?
I'm still going through my.
Oh, okay, yeah, you know, I'll have to look at what we did last week. Well, what about you, Tommy John?
Anyone else, I started last time.
You started last time?
I'll do cleanup.
I'll say that I attended a Suffolk County Supervisors meeting this week, and we, uh, part of the focus of the meeting was on noise control, Ryan Murphy came with me, and, um, we got some good ideas from Babylon and Islip on what they do with their codes, so they're gonna share some simple letters they send out, and maybe some code provisions, yes.
That's great.
Like it's, there's problems with people having neat parties now, they're advertising them, they're charging people to come to their homes. And, uh, the noise is getting out of control, so anyway, that was interesting, I'm glad Ryan was there, and, um, you know, just to show you that these problems we're all having, the same issues, so it's good to get together and talk about them. Billy, did you, uh, remember this week?
I guess he went looking at me.
Yeah.
I spoke to the highway this morning, and the parks department, parks department asked them if they could give them a hand moving part, part of the old Ponca, Ponca Bridge that was left over, down to, I think Neptune's, so people could, uh, look at the old, what a, you know, make it part of a museum down there. Um, their tractors broke down, and so um, the transfer station's gonna loan them equipment, um, a tractor and a low boy to help move it, so with the three departments working together to get, get, get a job done, and then on, update on Bel Air, um, they're waiting for the contract to come back. And, uh, they needed a performance bond to be executed, they hope by the end of next week, um, they should have most of the paperwork in order.
Oh, excellent, wow.
They're gonna let me know what they're coming, going down there with a sledgehammer.
Yeah, with a mask.
Couple other people too.
Thank you.
We're going that way, so. Oh, I didn't know, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Um, so. So we're gonna have our traffic, uh, task force, this is going to be, I think, the fourth meeting. Um, uh, that's gonna be July thirty-first at, uh, two PM here, uh, two to four. We're also, I, I, yesterday I went to the San Gennaro kickoff at Oakland's, it was actually really well-attended, Chief Kirin was there with his family, um, I'm not sure, were you there, did you end up there? Um, so, uh, but, you know, a lot of, a lot of great fun and, uh, bringing, you know, a lot of great attention to Hampton Bays. And I also just wanna commend, uh, Rick Martel, who put a lot of effort into that and organizing it, um, did a great job. Um, also, uh, we are planning as the, uh, disability task force, we are planning uh, a disability resource fair for November, Octo- and, and late October, November. Um, and, uh, a lot of that is starting to come together, we're gonna be having it at the Hampton Bay Senior Center. Um, and a lot, I just wanna commend Jamie Bowden, um, for really helping to, uh, manage, uh, all the resources, getting everybody together. Uh, we're gonna have a lot of great organizations there, US Autism Homes, um, Silo, uh, is going to be participating, so um, it should be a really, um, great event to connect, uh, families to, uh, special needs resources.
When's that happening?
November, we're looking at it, we don't have a, we just, we're getting a, I think it's November second, but we haven't confirmed that yet.
Uh, we had our best steering committee meeting on Tuesday. Um, it was a good meeting, we got a lot of information, we had somebody from the industry here at that meeting. We got input on what they are looking to, to see, you know, and, and as far as us working, not with them, but I guess, yes, with them, to see what makes sense for us and our code, and, and, you know, I think the panel was all in the same mind of, we're erring on the side of caution, and, and we were still of the mind that we're not putting any, anything in residential areas. Um, we had a conversation about where we were, we're working on maps, because a lot of these systems depend on distribution lines, so they're all limited, even if we say it can go in all of these zones, if there's no distribution line near that, they can't connect anyway, um, so we, I think we're we're really drilling down on the sizes and, and how they're working, I think pretty much everything grid scale is coming to the town board and not going to the planning board. Um, planning board will pretty much handle all the behind the meter stuff, and.
We're still talking about the setbacks and how much space we need.
Yeah, so we're, you know, so I mean, we are, we are hearing from everybody, and so there's no, we're only hearing from the opposition to best, we're listening to the industry, we're, NYSERT has been at our meetings, LIPA's been at our meetings, so you know, we're working through, and I think, you know, with the extension will be great, because as Ryan Murphy was saying, you know, the, the international fire codes haven't yet been adopted by the state, so they're looking for that. Um, one of the things that was mentioned by the gentleman from the industry is when they plan these, they then provide, you know, onsite training and training to fire service, and I had mentioned that, you know, for us, a big part of zoning these things is making sure our fire service is comfortable with them before it gets to us citing one or building one or issuing permits. So we thought, you know, and something that I had mentioned was, it would behoove the industry to start providing training to local fire service, because they don't have, you know, the money, the county, you know, is, is like, like Ryan said, they're coming up with training, but to see the industry that, that's wants these things to put in some money towards that avenue and towards that end would be helpful, because it just kinda helps us all, you know, feel a little better about having these things in our community, no matter where we end up putting them. So, there's, there's not really many sites along distribution lines that are viable, or that have and already have something on them, so we'll see where it all shakes out, but I think we're moving in the right direction, I think, you know, I think we'll hear from the, the community that they agree that we need to extend this moratorium to, to really, cause we don't wanna rush through, and we don't wanna just say, I mean, to, to the gentleman's point that came and spoke at our last meeting that said, well, just pull back the moratorium, take out residential, and then, you know, that's not, that's not what we're doing, we're trying to work through it methodically, and, you know, we were, the former board was, was, uh, you know, reprimanded for going quickly on the last code, they took the standards from NYSERTA, as everybody, nobody at the time thought that there was anything you know, amiss, and then you have these fires that happening, and now out of an abundance of caution, we're really taking our time and methodically working through with the industry, with LIPA, with NYSERTA, with stakeholders, so it's I think a much better process, and, uh, we'll get there.
Yeah, and we're being conservative, but, you know, technology's gonna change, and you can always revise the code as that happens. So, I, I, I feel good about it too, and, uh, so this next meeting, we'll talk about just trying to bring our, all of our thoughts together, and then we'll have another meeting with the public's invited to participate. Thank you.
And will we have a work session for the town board to actually weigh in on, on, I mean, cause it sounds like it's being developed, and then it's gonna come to us, and then we're gonna have to be. I'm sorry.
We wanna make recommendations, that, not we.
Well, we're gonna be adopting it.
The steering committee would make recommendations to the town board.
Okay, and so then the town board is gonna have a series of, of work sessions, because.
Yeah, you have to get comfortable with it too, and the same with the traffic mitigation safety task force, right, those recommendations.
Will be issued in a final report, and that will be, that, yeah, we'll, we'll, we could set up a work session after that's.
So this, this is gonna issue a final report as well, like the traffic mitigation?
Yes.
On what we, we've based on all the input.
Yeah, that's good, we're getting through these two big things, they will come to an end and we'll make some decisions.
Yeah, and, and that's a, you know, that's a, I'm really happy that you mentioned that, um, you know, the they will come to an end, and they will make. they will come to an end and they will make recommendations and, and have action items within those. I, I think that that's a really important lesson for government because oftentimes we create committees, we create task forces and sometimes those committees and task forces end up sort of outlasting their time. Um, and, and, and I'm, I'm really happy that what we're doing is we're really kind of taking a, a, a full speed ahead approach now and then sort of wrapping things up to really guide government in the future. So I think that's actually.
Really good stuff, thank you. What about you?
So, uh, we had our annual, uh, community advisory, uh, review committee for Gabriski Airport on Tuesday night. It was chaired by legislator Welker. Um, it was, uh, it was a good meeting and, uh, just in the way of updates, um, uh, Josh Smith reported that, uh, at Gabriski, they are employing, uh, GPS approach procedures on the other, uh, set of runways currently. It exists for runway twenty four, twenty six, that's, that's the nine thousand foot, uh, linear foot runway. Uh, and there's a smaller cross runway that goes from the northwest down to the southeast at five thousand uh, linear feet and, uh, they are going to be, uh, employing GPS approach procedures for inclement weather. So that is good. Uh, perhaps, you know, some of the air traffic in different weather conditions can be moved around the airport. That's, uh, one of the complaints from the community is that, um, it, when we use twenty four six, which is southwest to southeast and vice versa, you know, the, uh, those communities are affected more particularly by, uh, jet noise in and around Gabriski Airport. They have voluntary noise abatement routes and, uh, Josh Smith is, uh, diligent in sending letters, very difficult to change traffic patterns, train, uh, change, uh, frequency and time because it is a public airport, but, uh, they are doing a good job. Um, fifteen thirty three, uh, the GPS approach, it looks like it's going to be, uh, up and functioning in, in June of twenty twenty five. So there's, there's some work there to be done. Uh, they are expanding, uh, some of the facilities there, including the proposition for a, a new tower at Gabriski as well. Uh, they still are operating the one that, with the one that was built in the nineteen forties. These are all county projects um, as well. And as you know, we do have a military component, uh, with the one oh sixth and, um, Lieutenant Weinberger, uh, announced to the public that, uh, they are forming a, a restoration advisory board. They're looking for people from the community uh, and government and business leaders to participate with the, uh, Air National Guard in a series of meetings, uh, so that the Air National Guard can work with the community in, uh, various cleanup stages uh, from some contamination that has happened from previous operations years ago over at the airport. So, um, I'm gonna be, uh, asking this to go up online. This is from the Air National Guard. Uh, you all are welcome to attend. These are gonna be a series of public meetings. They wanna be as transparent as possible moving forward with how they are working to remediate things over at the airport. And this is particularly specific to PFOs and PFOA contamination in and around the grounds. So it was a, it was a productive meeting and I thank legislator Welker to, for putting it together. It was well attended.
Thank you for going and you're, um, giving us that update. Alright, well, if that's, no one has anything else, I move to close the meeting. And to go into executive session for personnel confidential legal advice and contract discussion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.